Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, I apologize for technical difficulties. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the October eighteenth Board of Selectmen meeting. May I have a roll call, please?
In at the meeting today is Mr. Alan Slaven, Select Board Member, Tricia Wirth, Select Board Member, Judith Whiteside, Select Board Member, and sitting here also is our Town Council, Richard Bowen, and our Town Administrator Derek Sullivan.
Thank you. May I have a pledge of allegiance, Ms. Wirths, I guess?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm going to be jumping all over this agenda this evening to try and we have hearings at specific times, but I'm going to try and get all of the rest of the business with the exception of hearing from Article thirty, so that they will have some time for their presentation. I would like and a motion to appoint Sharon Rice to the Old Colony Elder Services under art under item six, please.
And I will make a motion to appoint Sharon Rice for as on the Old Colony Elder Services Board of Directors for a term to expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to appoint Ms. Rice as the Old Colony Elder Services Board of Directors, member from the town of Wareham. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Ms. Wirths?
Yes.
And myself, yes, three zero zero. Thank you very much. Let's, I can't see who's in the meeting, so I'm going to have to rely on you a little bit. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of August twenty-third and October eleventh, please?
Motion so made.
Is there a second?
Second the motion.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote, please. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Ms. Wirths?
Yes.
And myself, yes, thank you very much, three zero zero. We have four hearings. If somebody here from Scarlet Rose, can you tell me if that it would be Ms. Kell Yard? If she is here, let her into the meeting, please. I can't, I can see Alan, and that's all I can see. Sorry. Is Ms. Kell Guard? With us?
Ask him to raise their hand.
Ms. Kell Guard from the Scarlet Rose Bistro, could you raise your hand, please, if you're here?
I don't see the person listed, well, Judy.
Okay.
Out of participants, it should be someone else besides her. I don't know that person's name, though.
It's her husband. His name is also Kell Guard. So. Okay, so there's only, it's an application for a seasonal liquor license extension. All of the paperwork is order in order. May I have a motion, please?
Make a motion that we approve an extension to a seasonal liquor license for Scarlet Rose Bistro, one ninety-sixth Main Street, Wareham, Mass. Through December first, twenty twenty-two, from December first, twenty twenty-two through January fifteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Is there a second to that?
Before a second, it's a hearing. Were we supposed to not open and close the?
No, that's not a hearing.
Okay.
This, it's only an extension. It is not a hearing, sir.
Sorry. Because it's listed as four hearings on the schedule.
There are. There's one for, one for flammable, one for a packy store, one for a transfer of a seasonal common vic, and then a modification of a shellfish grant. So that's four hearings, but this one, it does not require a hearing, sir.
Okay, one, one, two. I'm trying to find it on my.
It's the bottom of the first page named seven E.
Seven E, Mr. Slaven.
Oh, that's why I missed it. Thank you very much. I apologize.
Okay, may I have a second to the motion, please?
Second.
Motion made to approve with a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Ms. Wirths?
Yes.
And myself, yes, thank you very much. We have a first hearing at seven fifteen, and so that gives us about eight minutes, and we can't start it early. We do have four hearings, one at seven fifteen, one at seven twenty, one at seven twenty-five, and seven thirty. If you are in the audience for the Depot Auto Hearing, could you please raise your hand so that we can let you into the meeting? I did send a list of applicants' needs to WCTV, but I just want to make sure that we get all of you, please. Can't remember. Is there somebody here from Depot Auto yet? I think it's David, Derek Perry and James Cooley. Derek Perry or James Cooley? Can't start the hearing anyway, but. One of them has their hand raised?
Yeah, there's two James Michael Coolies and a candy.
Okay, so would you let them into the meeting, please? I'm sorry, ladies and gentlemen, I'm doing this on my phone, which is not the optimum. And I'm jumping from page to page, which is also not the optimum. While we are letting them into the hearing, I do want to make one very important announcement. I actually want to make two very important announcements. I want to thank Mr. Slaven for running the past two meetings when I was unavailable. And I also want to remind the public that our town meeting starts this Monday, the twenty-fourth of October, at the Wareham Elementary School. Okay, Wareham Elementary School, not the high school. And I'm hoping that we can put that on the bulletin boards and any other place, Mr. Sullivan, to make sure that everybody knows where the meeting is. Is that okay? You just nodded, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, great. Mr. Sullivan, do you have anything under your Town Administrator's report?
Chairperson, I'd sent the non-charge to the clerical and the laborers' union. I apologize this week. For the first time, I'm an actual void. I tested positive yesterday for COVID, so I'll be I just went through everything. I'll be back in time for town meeting, although I will be masked up, so that'll be fun again to do that, so.
Thank you. We will have to put those on the agenda of the twenty-fourth. We are meeting, the Board of Selectmen is meeting at six o'clock before the town meeting, because that item was not, no item noticing that we were discussing any articles on the warrant was on this agenda, so I can't bring it forward. Thank you for sending that information to us. Did you have dollar impact for either one of those?
Yeah, we can go up next week when they're on the agenda.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Can they hear us? There you are.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. My first Zoom meeting, so I have no idea if I'm doing this right.
We can't start the hearing until seven fifteen, so if you are from Depot Auto, can what we will do, we will call to open the hearing, and I will get a motion from the board to open the hearing. Then we will have you present your request, and then each of the board members will have an opportunity to ask you a question about your request and any of the documentation that you've handed in. After that, I will call for a motion to close the hearing. And then after we have closed the hearing, I will ask for a motion from the board, whether they choose to approve or not approve the application. Does that help you understand, sir?
Sure.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Just Whiteside, if you would like our announcements and board comments, I think we could just pass on those for today.
Yeah, we did pass on them, but if you have a couple of real quickies. Any announcements?
So every time that they go off, they kind of leave you.
Thanks. Like now?
Yeah, and so when that, when it comes up, and says Jane, you know, good. Then they're speaking to you, you know.
Okay.
Nobody else can hear. So you just want to make sure.
Okay, sorry. This is my first Zoom meeting.
No, it's perfectly okay. To let you know the public can hear you as well.
When we have completed the hearing for Depot Auto, I would ask that the individuals here for the application for twenty-nine hundred Cranberry Plaza Enterprise raise their hands so that you can be led into the meeting as we are taking motions. It's, we can start the hearings later than the time posted. We can't start them earlier. So what I'm going to ask is that the applicants, again, from the Cranberry Plaza Enterprise, raise their hands after we have closed the hearing on the first application. Thank you.
Mr. Slaven, while we have a few minutes, you'd asked us a question about a defibrillator at the COA building.
Yeah, they kind of threw that out while I was trying to just say hello and give them a very quick update of where we were during Senator Pacheco's speech and stuff, and that came out as a question back and just forwarded to you.
Okay, yeah, well, if you, people probably don't remember, the defibrillators have an expiration date. The former COA Director Missy Dizik coordinated with eighty Makepeace rather than using the formula grants funds, which could have been, could have purchased one directly from that. They chose to roll those over, and I think they, that we've received the check on it, so I know that that was being handled from the COA, so if that's not, it hasn't been ordered yet or picked up, I don't know, so.
When you, when you feel better, you may want to check with our new COA Director, Mrs. and Mrs. Rice, I'm sorry about that, and let her know, because I don't think she knows any background on that at all at this point.
Okay, yeah, just fine, because people say, why was something taken, or?
I know.
So, but, you know, I know Missy was, was working on it, so.
Yeah, we thought maybe it's something as simple as, like, everything else is on back order.
Yeah, so.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
It is now seven fifteen, and I would accept a motion to open the hearing for the application from Depot Auto LLC.
Make a motion that we open the hearing for the application from Depot Auto LLC, four hundred forty-seven Onset Ave, East Wareham, for an inflatable fluid license.
Inflammable fluid license.
Flammable. Very interesting, sorry.
That's okay. May I have a second to open the hearing?
Second.
Motion made to second, motion seconded to make the, here, open the hearing, I'm sorry. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Ms. Wirths?
Yes.
Myself, yes. The hearing is now open. We will now hear from Mr. I had your name a minute ago, Mr. Cooley or Mr. Perry. Would you choose to address this board?
We're both here. Gas station's been here for a hundred years. We bought it from the estate of Van Campbell, and we're requesting to, we've done everything that, the tank's been online since last year. We've had a lot of cleanup here, over years worth of cleanup. I don't know if you've driven by it, but you can probably see it.
I'm sorry, could you?
We're looking to.
Excuse me, one second. Could you please identify which one of you is speaking for the record?
It's James Michael Cooley.
Thank you.
And so we, we're basically looking for a permit to allow us to fill our tanks and to start our business, our gas business.
Excellent.
The tanks have been inspected, the tanks have been online with the state for almost a year. We're fully insured, and by the way, we plan on employing fourteen people from the local community, just so you know that.
Excellent. Thank you so much, sir.
You're very welcome. And I have Mr. Perry right next to me, so he's listening in.
Okay, would he choose to address us or not?
Let me address. He's kind of shy. Mr. Perry is a local boy from Onset, and, you know, we're, we're, we're all locals here. We're trying to keep the business local. We're trying to keep the employees local, and that's all I can say to you.
Depot Auto is the gateway to Onset. We're gonna remodel everything around here brand new, so when the tourists and all that come off the highways, they're gonna see a beautiful gas station over here, not, not what it was before.
Thank you, sir. Do either of my members have questions of these gentlemen? Ms. Wirths?
No, I'm, I'm fine. Based on everything I've read and what I know, I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Slaven, do you have any questions?
Don't really have any questions. I just want to thank the two gentlemen. I've been over there, and I talked to them a while ago. They've done a great job cleaning up the whole area there. They're basically rebuilding a lot of the old buildings there, the old train station, et cetera. And I'm looking forward to how they run the whole business. It's a good piece of area there. It's needed in the town for the location it's at, and, you know, we all miss Ann Campbell. She was there forever, and I expect this to be even better. Thank you very much for, you know, basically picking up on this, redeveloping this property.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing us to be at this hearing this evening.
Okay. I, I would echo Mr. Slaven's comments and just say, thank you for choosing to do business in Wareham. We very much appreciate it. Are there any further questions or comments about this? Is there anyone in the audience who chooses to speak in favor of this application? Please raise your hand. Mr. Slaven, you'll have to let me know who's raising their hand.
I'm not seeing anyone, unfortunately. Hold on, let me look at the participants.
Yep.
Just so I can also help. I had nobody.
Okay, is there anyone who chooses to speak against this application? Please raise your hand.
Same thing.
Okay. May I have a motion, please, to close the hearing?
Make a motion that we close the hearing on the application from Depot Auto LLC, four hundred forty-seven Onset Ave, East Wareham, for an inflammable fluid license.
There a second to that motion to close the hearing?
Second.
Is there any further discussion on the motion to close the hearing? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Ms. Wirths?
Yes.
Myself, yes. The hearing is now closed. I will now accept a motion, please.
I'll make a motion that we close the hearing.
No, 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 to grant the, to either grant or deny the application.
I make a motion that we grant the application from Depot Auto, for Depot Auto LLC, four hundred forty-seven Onset Ave, East Wareham, for an inflammable fluid license.
Thank you, because there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the motion to approve the application? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Ms. Wirths?
Yes.
Myself, yes. The motion is, the application is granted. The paperwork serves will be in the office probably, I know, I think it's all signed, but I'm not really sure, so I'm sure it will be ready on Monday, but you could call the office tomorrow and speak with Ms. Slaney to make sure that everything that you need to have signed has been signed. I know that all of the paperwork was in order for your application. It's just that, that the license itself has to be signed, okay?
I want to say my paperwork wouldn't have been in order without Ms. Slaney.
Thank you, that's nice to hear.
Remarkably helpful in all of it.
Excellent.
Awesome. Keep her around.
All right, thank you very much. Good night, gentlemen.
We can shut you off now, and we're gone.
Yeah, you're going to leave the meeting now. Thank you. All right, and now, Mr. White, you're gonna take them out, and you're going to bring in George, and I, I'm sorry, I don't know how to pronounce this last name, probably last name Drige. George Drize or somebody from twenty-nine hundred Cranberry Highway Plaza Enterprise LLC. Would you raise your hand if you were here on behalf of that application for an annual packaged goods store?
I'm here, sorry.
Okay, great. And your name, sir?
My name is George, last name is Jrej, J-R-E-I-G-E.
Jrej, okay. Excellent. And will you be the only person presenting this evening?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion, please, to open the hearing?
Make a motion that we open a hearing for the application from twenty-nine hundred Cranberry Plaza Enterprise LLC, DBA Cranberry Plaza Mobile, twenty-nine hundred Cranberry Highway, East Wareham, for an annual packaged goods store wine and malt only beverage license.
Is there a second to that motion to open the hearing? Motion made to open the hearing and seconded. I'm going to go for a roll call vote to open the hearing. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Ms. Wirths?
Yes.
Myself, yes. The hearing is now open. Mr. Shrej, could you address us and tell us what it is that you're looking for, sir?
Looking for beer and wine license in Mobile Circle K. It's convenience store, twenty-nine hundred Cranberry Highway. The reason I'm asking for it, because with the economic situation that we're in, I need a boost for the business, and I believe that the neighborhood needs that kind of thing, and at the same time, we will be very careful not to sell it to any minor or any underage person. We're equipped to do that with our electronic registers that we installed to check IDs and everything else. So we're trying to bring something to the neighborhood, at the same time, boost our economical situation.
Thank you. I just have one question, which might help the public. Where exactly is twenty-nine hundred Cranberry Highway, sir?
So, by the Home Depot, across the street from the mall.
Okay, thank you so, so much. Either Ms. Wirths or Mr. Slaven, if you have questions, please let me know.
I don't have a question. I just want people to know, this is a convenience store liquor license, which is allowed, because most people don't realize that. Most of the country, convenience stores like this do sell beer and wine. It's not been something very common here in Massachusetts, but it really makes a lot of sense, because the convenience stores and gas stations have virtually many supermarkets these days, and I look forward to this particular operation and all the gentlemen, and I have no issues whether it's how he runs his business, and I hope him great success also.
Thank you. Ms. Wirths, any questions of the gentlemen?
No, I just am looking forward to seeing the addition to the business.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone in the audience who chooses to speak in favor of granting this license? Please raise your hand so that we can let you into the meeting for a comment. If there's anybody here who chooses to speak against this application, please raise your hand, and we will let you into the meeting to hear your comments.
Nothing again, Judy.
Thank you. May I have a motion to close the hearing, please?
Make a motion that we close the hearing for an application from twenty-nine hundred Cranberry Plaza Enterprise LLC, DBA Cranberry Plaza Mobile for an annual packaged goods store wine and malt only beverage license.
There a second to the motion to close the hearing?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to close the hearing. I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Ms. Wirths?
Yes.
Myself, yes. The hearing is closed. I will now accept a motion, and I will remind you, or I'll draw your attention to the fact that this individual, this company will probably get their license approximately November first, first week of November, maybe second week of November. Our annual fee for a packaged goods store all alcoholic license is twenty-two hundred five dollars. They won't have the benefit of the license for anything other than probably two months, and they will have to apply for a renewal. So I just want to throw that information out there for you before you make a motion, or.
I would like to modify the motion coming through to reduce the fee because of the two-month season, even though it's probably the strongest two months in the liquor business between Thanksgiving and Christmas, and reduce the fee to one thousand one hundred dollars.
So is your motion to approve the application with that notation?
Yes, we can do it that way.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the fee issue, which would be, what did you say, eleven hundred dollars, sir?
One thousand one hundred, yes.
Yep, okay, thank you. Any further discussion? I will then go for a vote, which would be to approve with a fee of one thousand one hundred, which is a reduction in the annual fee. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Ms. Wirths?
Yes.
And myself, yes, three zero zero. The license is granted. I will say to you, Mrs. Giers, that the paperwork, you should probably call the office to see whether the paperwork has been signed. It may not be ready until Monday. Thank you very much, and thank you for choosing to
Much.
Stay with your business. Good night.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Now we're going to let in Frank Evangelista and anyone else who is here on his behalf. Please raise your hand, Mr. Evangelista, if you are in the audience, and anyone else who is with you, please raise their hand. I'm going to ask for a motion to open the, can we do it yet? Yes, we can. May I have a motion to open the hearing for a transfer of an existing seasonal license?
Hello? Yeah, I make a motion for a transfer, to grant a transfer of an existing seasonal common vic, victueller, wine and malt beverages license from, excuse me with all this, Papadoniatus Pizza, Inc., DBA Stashes, Onset Beach, one eighty-two Onset Ave, Onset, Mass., Nicoletta Papayonatus Managers to Main Street, Deli LLC, DBA, Onset Beach Patio and Grill, Frank Evangelista Manager under the provisions of chapter one thirty-eight of the Massachusetts General Law.
Thank you. May I have a second to the motion to open the hearing?
Yes, this is a motion to open the hearing only.
Yes.
It's a second for me.
Thank you. We are, I will go for a roll call vote, is it only to open the hearing. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Ms. Wirths?
Yes.
And myself, yes. The hearing is now open. Mr. Evangelista, would you choose to address the board on your request for the transfer of the existing license, sir?
Yes.
Identify yourself for the record, please.
Yes, this is Frank Evangelista, and I am representing Main Street Deli LLC, DBA, Onset Beach Patio and Grill in the mentioned transfer of liquor license.
Okay, would, would you tell us what it is that you are hoping to accomplish with this transfer, sir?
Well, it was over the time that I had made the decision to purchase the business while I was there in the summer, so I'm happy to take on the responsibility of the liquor license and help the area grow with the business itself going forward.
Thank you. Do you have anyone else with you this evening, Mr. Evangelista?
Just myself.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
You will. Thank you. Mr. Slaven, do you have any questions, sir?
Not so much. Again, Frank, good evening. I've been there a few times, because basically we've been trying to get this done. It's been a little difficult to get all the parties to get the correct paperwork to us, et cetera. And I'm really happy to see that Frank has decided to make the plunge and take over the business and lease the property, et cetera. And it's just another nice piece of a restaurant and a place for people to go in Onset Village, and I'm hoping you can find enough help to make it, make it easier, because I know, as everybody else's help has been a problem. Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Wirths, do you have anything that you'd like to add?
No, I'm okay with that.
All right, I just have a couple of questions or comments. I would like to see that you have more tips, certified individuals. You only have two listed on your application, and I don't know how you're managing to do that.
Yes, well, unfortunately, we are doing that currently because of the help. Yes, well, unfortunately, we are doing that currently because of the help situation. We don't have any staff currently on, on the payroll that is in the front, except myself and one other person because we have such trouble with staffing. So I do require them to have tip certification when they're in the front. The only other people that are in the front are underage and they don't serve or ring the alcohol at all. So we haven't been able to require anybody else to keep anybody on staff to get that certification, unfortunately.
Okay. The other question I have is you have a Florida driver's license.
Yes, I have a home in Florida.
So you are technically not a resident of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, is that correct?
I have, I just bought a home here and I'm on a deed in a house at 43 Head of the Bay Road, Buzzards Bay, Mass. 02532. So that is now going to be my permanent residence.
Thank you, sir, for that clarification.
You're welcome.
Is there any, any further questions from the board? I will ask if there's anyone in the audience who would choose to speak on behalf of this application. Would you please raise your hand so Mr. White can let you into the meeting? And also, if you choose to speak against this application, could you please raise your hand so that Mr. White could let you into the meeting? Mr. Slaven, would you let me know when you can see?
I see nothing.
Thank you. All right. I hear no other, no comments either for or against the application. So I will accept a motion to close the hearing.
Make a motion that we close the hearing for the application for a transfer of an existing seasonal common victueller wine and malt beverages license from Papadoniatus Pizza Inc., DBA Stashes, Onset Beach, 182 Onset Ave, Onset, Mass. Nicoletta Papenonitis Manager to Main Street Deli LLC, DBA Onset Beach Patio and Grill. Frank Evangelista Manager under the provisions of Chapter 138 of the Massachusetts General Law.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made to close the hearing as well as a second. Is there any further discussion on closing the hearing? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Myself, yes, the hearing is closed. I will now accept a motion.
Make a motion that we grant the application for the transfer of an existing seasonal common victueller wine and malt beverages license from Papadoniatus Pizza Inc., DBA Stashes, Onset Beach, 182 Onset Ave, Onset, Mass. Nicoletta Papadonitis Manager to Main Street Deli LLC, DBA Onset Beach Patio and Grill. Frank Evangelista Manager under the provisions of Chapter 138 of the Massachusetts General Law.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion to grant?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the motion to grant the application? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mrs. Slaven?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Myself, yes. The application is hereby granted. Mr. Evangelista, I know that you've been working with Ms. Slaney. Would you just give her a call to make sure that the paperwork that you need to have for this transfer is ready for you to pick up, sir?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for choosing to do business in, in onset, which is
It's my pleasure. Thank you very much. It's been nothing but a pleasure up to this point. I look forward to continued growth and success.
Thank you. Enjoy your evening. I'm now looking for Robert Torini and Dennis Pittley. If you are here, could you please raise your hand? This is another hearing. Are they here?
I see Dennis here. And Bob T. is here also.
Who?
It says Bob T. is probably Torini, though.
Okay, that's fine. Would you let them in, Mr. White, both of them? Thank you very much. I will accept a motion to open the hearing.
Make a motion to
Modification.
Open the hearing for an application for modification of shellfish grant number five to Robert Torini to add Dennis Pittsley.
There's a second to the motion to open the hearing.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to open the hearing. Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Myself, yes. The hearing is now open. I will ask that either Mr. Torini or Mr. Pittsley address the board. And before you do that, would you identify yourself so that we know who's speaking when we have the tape recorder going?
Okay, this is Bob Turigney speaking. And it is presently my shellfish grant in name only. And I want to add Dennis Pittsley to the SLSC on the shellfish grant, in addition to myself.
Thank you. Do you, is Mr. Pittsley, would he like to address the board? He doesn't have to.
Dennis is muted also.
Oh, okay. Mr. Torini, how long have you had the grant, sir?
I believe it's been approximately 10 years.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Long time.
And exactly what is it that you grow there?
Oysters.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Mr. Pittsley, if you're there and you are not muted and choose to speak to us, that's fine. If you're not there, that's also fine. I note for the record that Mr. Buckminster, our Director of Natural Resources, Shellfish Constable recommends this transaction, and all of the paperwork is in order. Do either of my board members have any questions of Mr. Torini? Mr. Slaven?
No, I know both gentlemen, and I know Dennis works really hard. He'll be a good addition for Bob as well. And I have complete faith in Dennis to take care of us and do a good job.
Thank you. Ms. Wertz, do you have any questions?
No, I just want to say this is a business that I was not aware of, was in Wareham. And I'm very pro this type of aqua growth, so it's nice to meet you.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this modification? Please raise your hand. And if you want to speak against it, please raise your hand so that we can let you into the meeting. Mr. Slaven, will you let me know who you can see, please?
So far, I show nothing. No.
Okay. All right. Hearing no people who choose to speak in favor or anyone who chooses to speak against this application. I will ask for a motion to close the hearing, please.
Is it possible for me to make a comment? This is Robert Turigney.
Yep.
And I was just hoping that the board might consider, in addition to approving Dennis Pittsley's addition to the grant, also approving to extend the term of the lease, the full 10 years? If that's possible. If not, I've been, I've been told by Ms. Slaney that I can do that separately.
Yes, you can do that separately. What's on, what's before us today is only to add him on, okay?
Okay. Okay, that's pretty much the way she explained it to me. I just thought I would ask.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for asking the question. Yep. I need a motion to close the hearing then, please.
To make a motion that we close the hearing for the modification of the shellfish grant number five for Robert Torini to add Dennis Pittsley to it.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to close the hearing. Is there any further discussion on the motion to close the hearing? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Myself, yes, the hearing is now closed. I will now accept a motion.
So we'll make a motion to grant the modification for the shellfish grant number five for Robert Torini to add Dennis Pittsley to it.
Is there a second to that motion? Thank you. Motion made and seconded to approve the application for modification. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Myself, yes. So it has been granted, Mr. Torini. I believe that the paperwork may be ready early next week, but you should call Ms. Slaney in the office if you don't mind. And thank you very much for choosing to do business in Wareham. We appreciate it.
Thank you for your help.
Okay, take care now. Okay, I think, and please tell me if I'm wrong. I think the only thing that we have left would be a presentation by Mr. Dahlmeier, one of the proponents of Articles 29 and 30. Am I correct?
Yes.
We have some minutes for approval also.
Yeah.
We did the minutes at the beginning of the meeting. We did the minutes at the beginning of the meeting.
I guess I'm sleeping.
You're sleeping. I wrote it down. Mr. Dahlmeier?
See you in a moment.
Please, and we will let you into the meeting. Thank you very much. And ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for your cooperation. I know that sometimes it sounds repetitive, what we're doing when we open a hearing and we hear from the proponents, we hear from people who choose to speak for or against. Then we have to close the hearing, and then we take a motion to either grant or deny whatever it is that we've been talking about. Seems complicated. And sometimes the paperwork or the counting of which votes are going gets to sound very repetitive. Mr. Dahlmeier, are you with us?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
I can. Thank you so much. Mr. Dahlmeier, would you introduce yourself? And then I know you have a presentation. The Article 30 is just to hear the report, so you don't really need to speak to that because what you're going to be doing is giving us the report, I'm guessing. Is that correct?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, great. Then, welcome to our meeting this evening. Thank you very much for presenting us with a lot of information that you had us, given to us prior to this meeting. And I would ask that you address us, please.
Well, thank you for having me. I apologize, my camera's not working at the moment. I'll show you my beautiful face tonight, but unfortunately, I have technical problems. My name is Jonathan Dahlmeier. I wear sort of two hats this evening. My first hat is the proponent for this petition. And the second hat is the chair for, not chair, it's the clerk for the Deacon School Steering Committee. So I sort of, I might toggle back and forth between those two as you go through this. To briefly go through the presentation I sent along there, Article 29, as Judith, as the chair suggested, was the important one, which was just to see if the town would act favorably on the findings of the committee. Those findings, page three of the presentation, basically lay out some of the questions that we answered regarding the feasibility of the Deacon's building. Is it affordable? Is the building in sufficient condition to house such an operation? And how could we make it sort of work and how to align with the town vision? So the findings, the school committee, school steering committee was that using that model we developed with renting some of the extra space out to some community organizations, we could subsidize the cost of the building to either eliminate or greatly reduce the costs around the building. Architecturally, the building is sound and there are no major concerns. There were some findings, which are later on in the presentation, and also in the executive summary that I sent along too. If you have that, that's very long. It didn't, 13 pages of text, so we'll skip that tonight. And then we did a community survey as well back in June. And we found that overwhelmingly, we had a lot of support, 75% of respondents, 354 of them either strongly or generally supported the idea. And then alignment wise, the, I lead to the town master plan and the community center aligns with several of the long-term goals that Wareham has in the master plan. So on page four, or slide four, rather, just some financial projections that we looked at. Breezing through, this is similar to what was presented at the springtime meeting. So some of this you may have seen previously. Basically, we estimated about a $400,000 cost to run the building using some historical expenses for utilities and some labor costs. Broken down by total square footage of the building, it was $5.23 per square foot per year. And then on the income, the top right column there, the general income, we identified about 27,000 square feet of easily separable space that we could use as rental space. And using an average rental rate of $16 per square foot, we end up with 432,000 per year at a net of 34,000 or so to the town. You know, some of the thoughts there was that money could be capital expenses for addressing issues of the building or even subsidizing rates if an organization wanted to get in, but the $16 was untenable, or whatever the case is. There's just some extra money there. And then other sources were some other things that we had found either through like peer town studies, like the hourly event rentals was that several towns use their community centers to host events that are, they charge a nominal fee for. There are a couple weddings we've seen, so there's some, some income opportunities there. But we identified some grants. There's some ideas we tossed around about a solar canopy lease. We had some interest in somebody putting a canopy either in the parking lot or on the roof to generate some income there. So there are some other ideas. But we didn't include that in part in the income forecast because those are, they're, they're up in the air, sort of. You know, those require some extra work, whereas the rental income, we can consider a little more concretely since there would be some, you know, contractual backing to those. Slide five is the architectural assessment. So the three key findings from the architectural firm that we hired, we actually came in under budget. We're going to return, I think, $3,000 or so to the town, so you're all welcome. The exterior was in generally good condition. There are some spalling on the sidewalks that was starting to erode. Some of the shangling was a little bit older. And then there was some vandalism on the south side. A couple of windows got, a single window got smashed at some point over the last couple of months. Interior, same story, generally good condition. There's a leak toilet valve here and there. The portable classrooms, as we discovered, are well past their lifespan, so those are not really considered usable space at all. And then the biggest question was the asbestos report. We looked at the 2017 Aheer report that was done by the school. And as they had said, there was no tribal asbestos located in the school. That stuff was fixed with the roof repair. So there'd be no concerns unless there was some construction of some kind that would disturb that. And then you'd have to go through the wickets for that. And feasibility wise, there was no major findings that would preclude the use of the building as a community center from an architectural standpoint. Looking at the community survey, so as I said, we had 354 responses. 75% of those responses were either strongly or supportive. Senior citizens overwhelmingly supported that. There's some more detail in the executive summary that breaks down some of those categories. The most popular activities that were identified by the community for the community center was council and aging being one of the centerpieces, the playgrounds, the sports fields, those are very popular. And then social events like community dinners, dances, art shows, things like that. And then cooking classes, surprisingly, very popular as well. And then we, some of the questions on the survey were discussing the social needs of the town. Since identifying what sort of social, socioeconomic things could be addressed by a community center. One of the things we found was most respondents identified an insufficiency in childcare in town. And then there was some difficulty in accessing social services due to transportation issues or waitlist problems, capacity problems with some of these organizations. We did have some meetings with some organizations, some that came before our committee to discuss interest in moving into the community center, namely like South Shore Community Action Council. And they, they were expressing the desire to expand their portfolio in both the Head Start Program and some of the more family-based assistance, like fuel assistance, food assistance, things like that. And they said, they said they could expand their portfolio pretty significantly with that larger footprint to address some of those things in town. We did a little bit of a quick demographic analysis too. And this is not news for anybody. Wareham is a little bit older than the average, the Plymouth County average. Significantly, the population grew quite a bit between 2010 and 2020. And if the trends continue, we could have a 30% senior population of 65 plus by 2030. Socioeconomically, Wareham is a challenged town with $34,000 in household income lower than Plymouth County. Our poverty rate is about 2% higher, and our disabled population is almost 10% higher as well. So there's some opportunities socioeconomically as well. Slide eight is just alignment with the master plan. These are lengthy, and I don't want to take everybody the entire night here. But the idea is, these are things that we identified in the town master plan that are either directly or indirectly affected by a proposed community center, one way or the other. Grant, and then grants and funding, we looked at some opportunities for accessing existing funds. We identified two major local, anyway, paths we could go through. One is CDBG monies. There are some opportunities there with either green energy, energy efficient cooling. I know some folks have said there's no air conditioning in school, which is true. And then we looked at also just rehabilitation of public facilities. And we found Section 105 A2 specifically outlines the idea of using some CDBG funds for rehabilitating old public buildings for senior center use. And then CPC money as well. We identified opportunities using that for some green space enhancements like community gardens, pickleball courts, a walking trail around the field, connecting to the horseshoe pond in the back there. So there are some ideas there. We could use some funding to sort of flesh out the corners on that building. I believe that is the end of my presentation. I try to make it quick for you. I do have, this was after I'd already sent this, and this was on the agenda, but the steering committee did a vote last Tuesday on the final report. It's 106 pages. I'm working on getting it uploaded to the town website. But if anybody on the committee is interested in seeing that, I'd be happy to provide that in the interim. But it goes into significantly more detail about how it came to these findings and what the key points were.
Thank you, Mr. Dahlmeier. Appreciate the conciseness of your information and also the information, the depth of your information as well. We, Mr. Slaven or Ms. Wertz, if you have any questions of the gentlemen, please let me know that you would like to speak with him. And if not... We, Mr. Slaven or Ms. Words, if you have any questions of the gentleman, please let me know that you would like to speak with him. And if not, don't hear either one of you. Mr. Dahlmeier, thank you very much. I did get a bigger packet than what's in the agenda and I, I spent a lot of time looking at it and I wanted to just say that it's clear that many people have put a lot of work into this information and we appreciate that. So unless you have anything else that you'd like to add, I will thank you very much and have you say good night. Unless, and I don't hear any questions from either one of my board members.
Well, thank you for having me and have wonderful.
But thank you so much. Take care.
Thank you.
Yep. We have now, my board members, Article twenty-nine is act on the recommendation and Article thirty is hear the report. So Article, the hearing of the report is actually covered under Article six on the warrant. So it's, it's sort of a duplicate vote to vote to hear it, but I will accept a motion on either Article twenty-nine or Article thirty.
I'll make a motion on Article twenty-nine. And our motion, the motion specifically is a no action motion. This is a citizen's article. It'll go in to the town meeting. And so at this point, we need to take, I make a motion for no action.
There are second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded for no action. Is there any further discussion on the motion? I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Ms. Words?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So no action will be taken. In Article thirty, I would suggest the same motion because it is a duplicate of Article six.
So I make a motion on Article thirty, a motion for no action.
Second.
Motion made and seconded for no action. Is there any further discussion on the motion for no action? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Ms. Words?
Yes.
And myself, yes, no, no action, three zero zero. I believe, well, we don't have any forty-eight hour men business. And I'm glad to see that a couple of other people had technical difficulties. I certainly had technical difficulties. Is there any further business to come before this board? Nope. Mr. Slaven, it's your turn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second to that motion.
Okay, a roll call vote, Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Ms. Words?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Thank you very much. And I remind all of you, town meeting is at the new elementary school Monday at seven o'clock. Be there early so we can all get a nice seat. Thank you very much. Good night, Wareham.